Welcome, everybody. Today is July 20th. This is the commissioner meeting. I'm recovered back to reality, back to normal. I never did get sick, but I did do my two weeks quarantine and it's good to be back. This time, I'll ask everyone to please rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Dave. Everybody good with the agenda or is there any additions?
I don't have any additions.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make motion to approve the agenda for today.
Moved in second to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move right on down into commissioner discussion. We have an action item, which is the meeting minutes of July 13th. Everybody get a chance to read them and look at them?
I did. I didn't see anything.
So I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of July 13th.
Second, ma'am.
Moved in second to approve those meeting minutes of July 13th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Sheriff, you're here for the 911 communications grant. Did that get sent to us? Is that in our package? Oh, there it is. Thought I saw it. So come on up and we'll... This is also an action item.
This was prepared, the grant. And it would be for the one additional station, 911 station, and it would be at the EOC. It would be at a backup at this point. And the total amount for that grant, $19,668.80. When will you find out if we actually did this? We should find out early fall. And they normally are... You can't extend those funds until November. So we'll know before you guys move over to the EOC then. That will be for at least moving, getting a station and moved over. The lines, most of the lines are already over there. We had talked several years ago about moving dispatch over to the EOC. And it was prepped for that. And this will be additional information.
So this is for one station, move the rest of it over as separate funds?
Yes.
Is there a grant for some of that?
There is grant. We were going to apply for that this year as well. However, that would be good for two years, that grant, to expand it. But we didn't have any dates, really. And we didn't want to get rushed. If we couldn't get that done this year or into the next year, we can apply for that again.
So what's the goal there is eventually move it? Do you want to wait till after this fiscal year and then apply for the grant or?
Yes, because this grant has to be in by the 31st. They actually want it by... They want this by Wednesday, have this in by Wednesday.
And that grant will determine then if we go forward to move it, all of dispatch over there if we get that grant?
This particular one will give us, if we had to...
Not this one, but I mean a future.
The future, yes.
So then all we have to do is come up with the money to build the room and the restroom and make it livable.
Mm-hmm.
So I entertain a motion then to approve this grant?
I'll make motion to sign the 911 communications grant.
I second.
Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And who does this grant?
This is the state, this 911. This is from the 25 cents under my phone bill that helps support that grant. I would say, I would like to say me first.
I had a quick question for you. The accident, the boat accident that called that the young person was injured, was the parent decided for not being on that boat?
I have not seen the report, so I can tell you that. You know, there were several accidents this weekend in the area.
On the lake?
One on the water, several, you know, on some agencies and...
I forwarded you the doctor's letter that he had sent.
I saw that, yes.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day. Hey, our next action item is at 9:15, so we got about seven minutes where we can start, and it's value cancellations. Okay?
The 11:15, we will not be needing to have that today. We didn't get all the information we needed on the Axiom. There are some reduction in some costs. That's the cameras and tasers. But we need to get some more information from IT.
Okay. We're postponing that one.
June 2, these cancellations are exactly the same with different names on them. Is that correct? Five and six?
Which number?
Five and six?
They're different people.
They're different numbers.
But the information...
One was block 10.
So the information on them is exactly the same?
Yes.
Okay. I was going, oh, like strange.
Doug, do you expect much challenge on the EMS stuff?
Well, today is just a budget workshop, Mr. Chairman.
Aren't they going for a study?
Uh, we're... Yeah, I can provide my understanding of what, where they're at with the completion of that study.
Okay.
A draft has been emailed out to the chiefs, so I can touch on that when it's on the agenda.
I'm a budget work chief. Have you heard anything from the state yet on appropriate income or what they think's going to happen or?
Regarding revenue? Yeah, what we're hearing is about 13% reduction, and we've already calculated that, yeah. We've accounted for that in our projected revenue.
And then McCullough's lot of taxes come right back up again. And it's your reduction.
I don't know how they're going to be at schools open.
How's it going with the CDH board?
It's tough right now. There's a lot of protests and a lot of negative emails and texts from folks. Now there's one person...
So Boise's still at stage three?
Yeah.
We are not.
Stage four, that's...
But they shouldn't really be in something with just recall, will it matter? They have one case. And there was one, two people. So it's like...
That nurse over there, that guy, that's so sad. The nurse?
Yeah. They tried to do that last week, and then Bundy's, we came in, basically shut the meetings and shut it down left. Delayed it again.
So do you see us, are they talking about us at all or no?
We don't really have the severity of it yet. I think it's coming. You know, we didn't lose our first person. And that, well, wait a minute, we lost the guy that went to Brundage right off the beginning, but he was counted, he was counted. But we lost our first one, that's reached up here. And there's a few more that are ordering right now.
That's sad.
All right, June and Sue and everybody else who wants to come up. We're going to move on to our next action item, which is value cancellations. We have five of them, so turn it over to June.
Good morning. I am going to be presenting cancellation three and four.
Okay.
And then Chief Deputy Leeper will do five, six, and seven. So cancellation number three, parcel number RPM 0016000010. We are requesting a cancellation from 901,938 down to 73276 for a total value to be canceled of 169862. This individual did call in June and did speak with one of the appraisers. They did make some adjustments and changes. However, the changes did not get to DeeDee Gossi to send an amended notice. So since this should have been taken care of in June, I am requesting a cancellation of value.
So explain to me again the effective age part, if his house is a certain age or older?
If the house is like my house or your house, they're older homes, but they've been maintained, that effective age plays into depreciation. So if you have a house that has had absolutely no maintenance, it's going to show more depreciation. You have an older home that's been taken care of and maintained and/or remodeled, then that effective age will be adjusted to reflect that. We're still going to show the original structure, the original home. However, we're not going to show... We'll still show mine is being built in 1960, but we might have an effective age on it of 1985 or 1990, depending on the, how much remodeling was done.
Well, this, this family then is stating that they had not remodeled their home. We had a newer effective age than they thought was appropriate?
This was Anthony's, and I can't really answer that for 100% certain. He just put removed effective age and then did not get voucher turned into DeeDee. So I am presuming you are correct that it was one that he probably thought had been remodeled and it hadn't. So he had to make an adjustment.
For that value, it's a pretty big house, it looks like.
It's probably a... This is a condo.
It's a condo down in the water.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I would entertain a motion then to approve the request for cancellation of market value.
I move that we cancel number three, RPM 0016000010.
Moved in second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Kind of the same thing. These people did call and we made some adjustments. So our market value of 139,597 was adjusted down to 105,123 for a market value cancellation of 34,474. This one is in the land. So what I am getting from this is this possibly was not in the proper land grade because he put had corrected data, did not get voucher turned into DeeDee.
Okay, everybody good with this? I'd entertain a motion to approve?
I'll approve. Make motion to approve the request for cancellation for number four, parcel RPC 00320320080.
Moved in second at all favor, please say aye. Motion carries.
Once, once every album is signed, yes.
So June, on the, on the Ludwig one, does that mean that Anthony actually went into those units?
I don't think so. We think police people, I do not believe they went into this unit.
All right, next one up is Sue Leeper with number five. I take it?
Yes. So cancellation number five for Ronald and Lisa Mio, Myo, RPM 04810000010. The square footage, this was Jennifer Morgan's, and she discovered that the square footage, somebody had went in and changed the label and it was assessing them for an extra level. So the correct square footage should be 2317 rather than 3214. We are asking that the land remain the same and that the improvement value of 173,959 be canceled.
Are these houses or are these... It said storage, you know, down one of them or something.
Savannah Ridge, they're houses.
They're houses.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve or deny?
I just have one more question.
Oh, sorry.
So exactly, so same year, nothing's been done to them?
Correct. Correct.
Right.
They sit right next to each other.
I move then that we cancel number five, RPM 04810000010.
Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Next one, number six.
Cancellation number six for Mesa Cold Storage LTD as the owner, parcel number RPM These two units were identical, so I'm asking for a cancellation on the improvement value only of 173,959.
Okay, everybody good with this one?
The other one.
Square footage is pretty easy to nail down.
I'll make motion to approve the request for cancellation for parcel six, RPM 04810000020.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Finally, number seven.
Cancellation number seven for Vincent and Robin Naughton Family Trust, parcel number The property owner contacted our office for verification of square footage. Appraiser Maureen Mayer went out and re-measured his entire house. Upon the field inspection, she discovered the square footage of the dwelling was incorrect and she corrected it. We are asking that the land remain the same and that the improvement value be reduced by 35,00969.
I approve that we approve the cancellation number seven, RP70057000104A.
Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So June, a real quick question on these, slightly square footage ones. So when you guys actually get the building permit and put it into the system for the first time, does anybody, first of all, cross-check that? And secondly, how long have these been on the rolls if that's square footage? So do they...
The two that I presented have been out way since 17. It got changed in 17 for some reason by someone who's no longer with us.
Okay.
And we're not sure how long Mr. Naughton has been wrong.
So until they bring it to our attention, then?
Yes.
Until they bring it to our attention, you know, there's... So they just get to go back?
I think I called in the house during the building call-in and she, nobody, she didn't say anything.
Okay.
This time, I decided to go back.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. So when they put them in, like off the building permit, somebody double-checked it at all?
Good to be back.
Or what's that process?
When we did a building permit, we called, we took our plans, but we also filed and basically looked at property and we can measure it. But what happens on these is in our PROL program, we can have the first level that we put in, and if they put in the wrong label for an upper level, if they put in, is it second level or second, second story, it'll add an extra level to it.
Got it.
So instead of having two levels, we can end up with three. And it's just, it's a beast of that program.
Okay, got it. Just a box got checked in, it was inappropriate.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day. Be safe. Okay, we got five minutes until our next action item. If you need a break, now would be a good time.
He's all that David gave me, so I don't know. But I saw it somewhere. Yeah, there's a signature page for it.
Morning, David. Hey, we didn't get a signature page with this. Do you have one?
Yes, I do.
Okay. We haven't talked about it yet, but I just, there wasn't one here. Now this, is this... Well, we'll wait till we get to it. So we'll go on to our next action item, which is sign the non-appropriations clause for zip-lead master agreement. And I understand this is the new broadband that we purchased?
It is. You, you signed that agreement to up our speeds, but we didn't have the non-appropriations clause in that agreement. So this is what we need to get to finish that out.
Okay.
It's the non-appropriations clause.
If, if the next board decides that it doesn't want to fund it, then we can get out of the contract. We don't have to go into a contract.
Perfect.
Okay, if everybody's good, I'd entertain a motion then to approve this.
I'll make motion to sign the non-appropriation clause for zip-lead, zip-lead master agreement.
Moved in second, any more discussion? It still came in at, what was it, 20, 28,000?
I can't remember exactly, but I can, I can look it up.
For another gig or something?
This will give us a symmetrical gig, 1,000 megabyte connection, and then 200 megabits at each for our remote locations.
And when will this start?
Uh, we have all the initial planning done. I'm not exactly sure of the date.
But pretty quick. I'm guessing a couple of weeks or?
Yeah, we need, yes, I hope so.
Okay. So if they move in second, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries.
Excited to see that that one grant got in also for...
Oh, yeah.
Stone Cove.
The wire, really. Everything kind of last minute this year.
Anytime we can get any amount of fiber up here, though, that's really good.
Okay, here you go, David. Those are two of them.
I don't want one.
Do you want all this stuff back?
I wonder if we should have someone to test my signature.
Have a good week, and you're fine. You're healthy. Did you choose therapy equipment? Did you choose therapy equipment? Rip them all out, rip the entry from me.
Thank you, is there any questions?
Not a good recommendation.
Nope. Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have 15 minutes until our next action item, which is the Valley County Fair Board request, so we probably better wait to start that one. So Carol, when are we supposed to read this, in late evening?
Thank you, this is very organized.
And then David Lombardi's going to be the mediator.
I couldn't sleep last night, this might help tonight. It's great having you come in and watch me. Love that. Thanks for coming today. Morning, Allison.
Did that L2 for the EMS go up or down? Remember?
What do you mean?
The levy rate?
Well, we don't know what the levy rate is because we don't know what their request is. That's the new construction value.
This is last?
No. Yes, yes, that, that levy rate that you see on there is how we calculate the additional amount for new construction value that can be added.
Which rug?
Did you get the letter from Carl Barrett on the fair?
Nope.
No. Hey, I'm not lying.
It's Carl, isn't it? Carl, we got about two more minutes, then we'll start.
I think that's Carl.
Yeah.
Looks different today.
That's a clean shirt, that's it, yep.
Any issues with being online?
Okay, we're going to go on to our next agenda item, which is an action item. We have a request from the Valley County Fair Board to have Valley County Fair and Rodeo proceed on, in August of 2020. Who's going to lead this discussion? Carl, Allison, who's? You need to come up? Please come up to the mic and state your name.
My name's Carl Barrett, chair of the fair board. And we had our meeting. And it's looking like what we want to do this year is support our 4H. Go ahead and have the 4H option and everything, and do everything we can to help the 4H make this happen in a good, safe manner. We would like to rent the tent for her, because it's too hard to do it in the arena, because getting the animals from the shelter they're in over to the arena is pretty difficult, so. And the board has voted, and everything comes that we will let the rodeo and actual fair not, not be this year because of the, the risk. We can't do it without, can't do the guidelines. There's no way we can, we can separate people. And then if we did separate them, you know yourself, after a few beers from the beer garden, they're going to blow that right out of the water anyhow. So I'm here to say that we'd like to hang on to our funds, do some repairs on the fairground. We're going to use those, some of those funds to help Allison out and see that that goes well. And I'm not going to speak for Allison, but anyhow, whatever she wants from us, we're going to be there for her, so. But between the food vendors and the gatherings, you know, everybody knows here that's been there, hell, we really know, so. Gets pretty crowded out there.
So are we still going to do food vendors and all that as well?
No food vendors. Unless somebody wants to volunteer to come in for the day of the fair, I mean, the auction. But the rodeo has been canceled, or will be, hasn't been yet. Everything depending on this meeting today, and after this meeting, then everything's clear in the air, then we're going to start making phone calls and canceling. We are going forth with the 4H. Kids worked hard, they deserve this.
So Carl, can you give me a list of all the people that are on the fair board? I know we should know that, but there's been a lot that shifted last year, too. It's you.
We got Zach Redman, Dylan Redman. I don't know Kenny's last name. Hart.
Who's that?
Kenny, uh...
Jennifer Hart.
Hart.
Jennifer Hart?
Yeah. Eric Thompson. What would I do without Don? And what? Oh, yeah, Toby Olson. He's our newest member, so.
And Don, are you a Don's member?
Oh, I remember, I thought she was my secretary. She's an amazing person. She's my everything.
And then is Julie still the treasurer?
Pardon?
Who's the treasurer? Julie?
Oh, treasurer, sorry, Ald, I'm hard here and you know that.
Yeah. And Don, what was your last name? And you're the secretary.
Julie's not on the board, she's the treasurer.
Right. We've gotten some heat on this, we've got some calls from folks that, of course, want to have the whole thing and be damned with the virus, and, and it sounds like we left that decision in your guys' pocket. It was your decision to make, and this is what you come up with, so I fully support that. I definitely agree that we need to keep the 4H part of it going, because those kids have spent a lot of time and energy in that.
That's right.
Allison, how are you going to do the auction?
So, we're a small group, I can stop.
Yeah, you probably better come to mine.
We're, we're a small enough group, especially this year. I had some kids that, you know, we knew from a time ago that was going to be a tougher year. So I feel like this group is very empowered, they're willing to do whatever it takes to make this work. They've, our plan is to, we'll still do our little shows. Um, I can, I'm getting a camera so that I can do a lot... I can, I'm getting a camera so that I can do a live feed for the older grandparents and stuff that have asked if we could do that. So I've got three Verizon hotspots and gonna try to make that work, but there is a way to do it. I just have to find, you know, what the internet's like around here. And then we will, on Thursday, we do just have a couple of small events that happen, like the fashion review, this 4H thing's close other projects. And Saturday's auction will go the same, but we can change the arena a bit, like shrink it, but not maybe as much. We can keep people around, we can still.
You can rent the.
If we got 50 buyers, I would be jumping up and down. I mean, I don't see, I hope that we get, we get to come and support these kids and help them pay for these animals because I don't have $150,000 to cover what they're doing or however much that they get every year. So it is a really big deal. We'll do whatever we can to accommodate.
Are you gonna be online bids? Do people call in and bid?
I don't have that set up. I didn't pay for that. We don't have, you know, everything's volunteer that we do, our market sale committee. So we could have maybe tried to outsource that, or I could look into doing that, but we'll need money. That's not free.
Hello, I was just wondering if you could give us cell phone number that people could call and say, I'll bid. I know that's gonna be a tough deal, but we need to be flexible in how we make this work so that.
Well, there's, people might send a representative and whatnot, sure.
Or they could call ahead and say, I'll give $2 a pound on a bid. And have that on a list so that if you get down to that $2, then you can take that bid.
Yep. And we do, we do have folks that'll do that ahead of time anyway, just because they can't be there. And they'll say, can you do this amongst all the kids that didn't do as well or, you know, that might need a little extra help, so.
Can I say a Zoom or something like that, you know, might be a good alternative, but if you don't have good wifi down there, that might be an issue.
Yeah. There's a couple of different stream options that we will try, but to, it's either somebody is there, calls in, because we can't monitor to like a Zoom conference. We're already entering everything on that fair entry, doing the add-ons and the, I'm making sure they're all going on the right truck or the right processor and it's a lot to do at the moment, it's pretty. So we might have other people, you're right, that help other people take bids, represent them.
Sure.
So that's definitely an option.
About how many animals are up for auction?
Approximately 46.
And then are you guys gonna do a hamburger fry and all that stuff too?
So we do know that as long as you cook on site, you can cook. So Payette Cattlemen are still gonna come.
Good.
They're gonna do the burgers. We'll just have condiments in a package and they can go through that, grab a bag of chips, grab a bottle of water or something, you know, so we're not, we won't do the traditional like we, we used to bake beans and salads and that, we won't contend with this year. But yeah, we still have something for our buyers, absolutely. And just kind of gives everybody a chance to check in, the same process, so.
Sounds like you guys have thought a lot about this. Carl, what about stuff you want to repair? You got a list or you got an idea?
A lot of things we like to do. Our biggest thing is, we sell out every year, you notice. The, we can do a little arrangement, we probably put in more seats by changing more rodeo grounds a little bit more like we did years before we moved it, a couple of years ago we moved it, both of you. Now we can redo some of the other end down there on the cap area and use more seating. We turn people away every year. That's, we want to look into that in the near future, making more seating for the rodeo. That's very important.
You have pretty extensive electrical work.
We do have a lot of, you know, for the 20 some years I've been going down there, it's been electrical issues all the time.
Shut down several times last year, didn't it?
We have, you know, one year they, we brought in generators. We never had to use them, but the county department kind of, you know, as back in Jeff Black's saying, he kind of insisted they be there. When you got food vendors, then, really important, we do have power issues. Overloading the system every year.
I did ask Buildings and Grounds to put 10,000 in their budget for that electrical upgrade this year too. So hopefully we can do that. And then also we purchased a stair for that building so that we can get up on top, it's a rolling stairway so they can still use that building and.
Yay!
Yes. And it should be here. Yeah. That's a great idea. I'm fully in support of the kids. We need to take care of our kids. I'm really happy to hear you guys talked about the rodeo and what happened. I apologize for not being there. I was actually on the river and had no access to anything, or I would have been at your meeting. So I'm really glad to hear that, you know, you guys are looking at doing some upgrades this year. Let's just use it as a rebuilding year and next year you can actually get more people to that rodeo with additional seating. A great idea.
Another note I would like to say, our main concern this year is safety of our community. You know, we were like somebody else, we don't care, most people come from out of state, now out of our county, but we need to worry about our community. That's our big concern.
And is there an option if there was an outside?
Yeah, that was my next thing. Where Toby and Tyler Proctor wanted to put together a junior rodeo on the date of the auction.
No, it's Thursday.
Thursday.
Auction's Saturday.
But anyhow, he's willing to sign a waiver to make him totally responsible. Allen County is not held accountable for that at all.
Well, you can contract out fairground.
Yeah, and I also have barrel racing company. It's supposed to be the weekend after the fair of this year, since we're not having it. They still want to come, that's another outside. I haven't anything to do with that. They have to also sign a waiver. We're not liable. We have a waiver to, I have a waiver to take them, to lease us some liability and responsibility. They, the barrel races is mostly the family members of that. They almost do as they always do. At least Leo I think would be more senior.
It's not anything I see.
I'm shocked, I thought he would be here.
Is that the mini bulls that he's been talking about?
He's gonna do that, you're talking about Proctor, he gets some work.
Carol, do you remember, don't we have a contract if somebody wants to use the arena? Like one year it was. We had to do something for an event because we would be liable of those injuries. And I thought we came up with a, you can lease the arena for so much a day. Who? Maybe? That's too far back. I think it was, it seemed to me like it was a, what do I want to say, a big truck, what do I want, a monster truck thing and they put a bunch of dirt in the arena and built jumps and all that stuff. Was it? Do you remember how we did that?
Wasn't that dirt biking?
We have.
I'm saying maybe what we need to do is just have you send that over to Carol, take a look at that.
Because, and we won't talk for Tyler or Toby either. We'll formally ask and, you know, we're just, I guess this is in conversation because that's there, I don't want to speak.
Don, do you remember anything like that though? Wasn't there like a, a leak? That's what I saw. Could you forward some of that to Carol for us and maybe to us, just so she has a copy of it, kind of what we're looking at?
Could we get an insurance policy also?
There's on another, on another.
That, Don.
Yeah.
We, we won't be charging Toby because he's done so much over the years in donations. It would just be quite wrong to say Toby's gonna pop up to the venue.
He just needs to help with the restrooms because I tell you what, I've already cleaned them and bleached them all down and did the 4H farm, power wash though.
Yeah, we've had that and we've loaded on that for something new.
We've had the discussion of using those grounds for other venues. I mean, you know, how can we make some money on that in order to help support the fair and improve those facilities that are there? So I think we need to come up with what that looks like, making sure we have a proper protocol in place to make sure we have.
I know we did it once, it was years ago.
Well, I think it's a great location to do other things. And once this craziness gets done, certainly opportunities to use it for other purposes and actually becomes a better venue. Other communities are doing it. No.
Maybe not the first, like, so much, but again, we, I think they learned the hard way on that one, but they hauled in all those tons of dirt and rock and the jumps and getting it out so you can make it a horse arena again. Yeah, no, okay.
Since we're on that subject, have you guys been grooming the arenas? Tractor working good, everything?
We got grill blast, tractor's working amazing, it was good last year, no problem.
Toby brought in a water truck.
We really appreciate that. Yeah, there's water trucks still in it for us, watering. Yeah, I've had a lot of keys and whatnot.
You might have to use five gallon buckets.
I know, I get a bunch of 4H kids and they want to volunteer, so.
Hey, is anybody else? Anybody else want to add anything in the back?
Yeah, did there anything that you wanted to say or something, they really wanted, and I appreciate them so much, they wanted to be here.
You need to come up to the mic and state your name. No?
Okay. Is there anything else you would want to say or add to? He's saying, is it still a decision or whether or not?
We're gonna have a vote here shortly, we'll find out. Please state your name and the town you live in.
Andy Wegener, and I live here in Cascade, Idaho. And I understand that there's all kinds of things that are going through your mind as far as liability, risk and stuff like that. And might even be thinking, oh, it's just one year, no big deal, we'll just skip it for a year. But really it's a whole lot more than just one year because some of these kids, it's their last year and so they won't have it again. Other kids, it's their first year and a lot of work gone into it and all of a sudden at the end it gets pulled from them. They won't be back because there's a lot of lessons that are, they're gonna be taught through this and the decision gets made, that gets made. And I would ask you to consider it very closely because as you make the decision and you say, oh, it's one year, it's really a whole lot more because it's setting a precedent for what these students are learning down the road. It's a, it's a decision that's gonna impact for six, seven, eight years. When my daughter first started it, probably six, seven years ago, as far as 4H goes, I would have thought, oh yeah, just one year, no big deal. But if they put all this time and effort into the project and right at the end, the culmination gets taken from them, a lot of them aren't gonna come back. And there's a lot of things that are gonna be lost as a result of that. One of the things I encourage you as commissioners, you have a very competent young lady right here in Allison who's put in a lot of work. And if she thinks that it can be pulled off safely within the parameters of what need to be done, I would encourage you to allow her to make that effort on behalf of the students and their families because it's not just one year. It's not just, oh, it's a rodeo or 4H or whatever. There's a lot of things that our kids are gonna miss out on in terms of learning where to take a risk and not to take a risk, where to move forward and where not to move forward. And so I think, I think it needs to be weighed very, very carefully.
Anybody else have anything they want to add?
Bring up the tractor issue. We haven't signed an official agreement on it because I know it's partially the county.
You could be at the mic, we're streaming.
He's discussing the tractor MOU that would still need to be drafted so that there's a formal shared use for both fair board and, and then also allowing someone like Jeff to use it as well because it's nice to have as many people we could help. Does that, does that help?
We really, we appreciate the county doing, you know, we, we got a nice tractor, how to deal. Thank you, Jeff. And it's amazing, but we do need an agreement that makes sure that when we do need it, that we have it available. We don't have to go hunt it down or have Jeff low bed it in or something. But I'm sure Jeff would contact me if he's pulling it out there. Or Allison one, so anyhow, it shouldn't be a problem.
It usually stays pretty close, doesn't it, Jeff?
Yep. Yep.
Great.
I never see it terribly in that area.
Oh, it's, we just want a little agreement written up and make sure it's, it's okay and get that done. So whatever you guys come to a motion and vote on, and we're gonna stand by you guys. And we're gonna do everything we can to make the community safe. Allison's got a good plan. We're gonna get behind her and we're gonna, we're gonna see to it these kids are taking care of one way or the other, so.
And I appreciate all you guys' help and energy on the fair board. I was on it for nine years.
I know you were.
A lot of work. It's kind of a thankless job, but.
Yeah.
Carl, I'm gonna leave it up to you guys to come up with that MOU on the tractor.
Yeah.
You guys write it how you think it should be and then get it to Jeff if he can cruise it and then we'll.
All right.
He'll get it to us and we can.
I'll have Jeff present it to you, so we'll be happy to do that. And yeah, everything's looking, looking good. You know, it's kind of, we're in a weird time, a weird year. We have to do what we think's best for our community.
That's right.
So I said that too many times already, but anyhow.
We're working on budget too, so if you guys have, you know, an idea of what you want to do.
Yeah.
Please get it together as quickly as possible.
And then, yeah, the, we'll do that. So the, I don't know, there's somebody else I wanted to bring up, I can't remember what it is. Anyhow, my phone burned up last week. I'm getting those meme text messages and stuff and.
Apparently I posted on Facebook too.
There's a lot of stuff going on on our website. We just found out how that was happening. We didn't have any idea and to this day, since our last board meeting, we don't know where these people get their information.
Well, ours are all right against you, mine in particular, that I've canceled everything and that's not my place. It's the fair board's place to give info.
Okay, well.
And so, you know, communication is a tool, we all need to use it. And, you know, I've been totally in support of our kids from the start. We had this conversation three months ago.
Right.
You know, let's take care of our kids, no matter what, we're gonna make sure that our kids are taken care of through this process. The rodeo's the only thing I have questioned because it's not profitable unless you can build those stands. And so that was the question that I had for the rodeo.
So we're not gonna, we're not gonna be wasting the taxpayers' money over spending that much, get the livestock in there and not even retrieving half of it back, it's not worth it. So if people get mad, they get mad.
And I think it's a good plan this year to have a building here. You know, let's use those funds to do some of the things that you guys need to do and make sure it will be in the year.
Yep. So it's great. Yeah, that's good. So, you know, if you see anything that came up on the web or our website or anything that's on Facebook or anything, it didn't come from the fair board. So, because everybody's been questioned, but somehow it's somebody know, I don't know how.
It's just the way the world is now, everybody's got their own opinion, Carl.
Boy, they do.
Don't think, gotta sift through it.
Sometimes we need to keep our opinion to ourselves, so.
We do things for the right reason and not everybody will understand that ever, but.
Right.
It's all done with the right reason. You guys have great hearts for everything that you do and all the work you put into it. So there's a lot of time and effort.
I want to apologize for not being in more meetings, I do work still. And if you guys have other meetings on Fridays, man, I have every Friday off.
As many of yours as possible, you have all the information of what's happening.
All right, I'm good. If you guys are good.
All right, Carol, we'll deliberate, see what we want to do.
I think we're on the same page, so I think things will work. All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
So what's your preference?
I would move to approve that we follow the fair board's direction and allow the children's cattle or livestock auctions continue under the direction of Allison and safety measures she has in place.
I'll second that motion. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Done deal, there we go.
We can get comfortable now and do what we need to do.
That's right. That's right. Thank you guys all for coming in and being a part of the community, this is a big event for Cascade and for Valley County too. So let's move forward and adjust accordingly. All righty, thank you very much. Okay, our next agenda item is in 20 minutes. So if you need a break, now it's time to take a break.
Mr. Chairman, we will have Mr. Ron Platt calling in, I believe.
Okay.
We'll get that set up in just a couple of minutes.
Well, you got 20 minutes.
Okay. I'm getting a load off my back. I have a deal with the commissioner, especially the chairman. You know?
I have a lot of load on my back.
If you wore a mask, it would improve a lot of things, you know?
The heat one that goes over your whole face.
Well, I would like that, I, I wouldn't even put the goggles in, that way I could just say, hey, I'm blind and that's how it works, so. But thank you for taking the time, I'm sure you got, you all have a lot of weight that you're carrying.
Well, it's going really pretty well up here, not so well down below, but it's going really well up here. And we'll just have to play it by ear, it's going to be interesting to see what they do at schools. I don't think anybody knows what they're going to do at school yet. That's going to be an issue.
It, it will be.
And we may have to go through an infection period and a kind of a shutdown thing or something until everybody gets recovered and then come back to try again. I don't know how else you're going to do it.
Well, and they're so, the numbers are so low on that age group of catching it. That either it's going through very slowly or because of the age and their, their health, many of them are getting it, so.
Biggest group right now is 18 to 28 year olds. That's the biggest spreader right now. And most of them are asymptomatic.
It's getting the cases, but it's not the death that.
Right. Death rate's really pretty low, it's the super seniors that we really got to be careful of. And I think they're all doing a great job of staying away. The guy I was exposed to didn't even know he was sick, didn't even know he had it.
I don't get it if he wasn't out in the community.
He doesn't know either, yeah. One other person that he met in that two week period before I got with him.
Is his wife doing okay? I was worried about.
Yeah, wife, yeah, wife's doing fine. And he's probably going to end up in a long-term care facility in Boise, but not from COVID, from the back surgery that failed.
Ooh, I'm sorry?
Pretty much paralyzed from the waist down.
That's not a position he probably ever anticipated.
No, and it's been really an eye-opener for me because it's like, you just don't know who you're talking to. That's why the masks are so important, but there's a lot of kickback on the masks.
Because of how it's, how it's being presented.
I suppose.
I think that's a lot of it, in the American mindset.
I know some of the health district guys, not me, but some of the others have gotten death threats.
Really?
Gotten stuff painted on their house and it's just like, they're trying to do the right thing.
Yeah.
We're trying to do the right thing.
Reacting that way is, is as bad as the riots that are going on in the cities.
Oh, it's crazy what's going on in the cities now.
Yeah, and yet it's acceptable. Nothing's being done that.
People letting them get away with it, they're going to get worse and worse and worse.
Yep.
That's the way it works.
Yep.
Trump's going to fix it all.
Oh, really?
He's going to try and fix it all.
I think it's going to take all of this, I don't think we can count on one person anywhere.
They're talking about a national mandatory mask right now. All the governors are back here supposedly this week trying to figure out how to slow this thing down again.
That's, that's going to go over like the lead balloon in the American culture. Rugged individuals, it's not going to be well received.
It's got to be, yeah, more like a voluntary thing instead of you will.
Yep.
And that's what we've done up here, just made it voluntarily pleased. And that's all you can do, but.
It's hard to know, unprecedented.
Michigan sheriffs have said that they're not going to enforce the law from the governor there. It's like, then, then all of a sudden.
It would take another whole case.
Enforcing masks is more important than other things, it's like.
Yeah, there's a lot of other more important things out there than if you're wearing a mask.
Used to be that if you wore a mask and wearing gloves, you'd get arrested if you walked into certain places, so.
I've been robbed at gunpoint in a bank.
But the mask gone?
Well, he had a hat, he just went like this.
I better get going, thank you.
Way went.
Be safe.
Yep, 19 years old.
I don't know how people think you're going to get away with robbing a bank.
They, he did, they never found him.
Never found him, huh?
Nope. Tell you what, the next time a guy walked into the hat, on, I about panicked.
Yeah.
Figure out how to get rid of the.
I know, but I've never locked my doors in my life, and I'm locking my doors every night, like this.
We've been locking our doors, the only bad habit I have is I use my truck on the garage. Yeah, really, yeah, I thought it took you in there. But I put in video cameras. In fact, I'm on my second step, just getting these stuff this spring, they're really good.
I bet you get a lot of game in there.
You know, it's really interesting, when, the first set I got about 10 years ago. I got to watch it one day and cows, I could watch the cows and they're coming back. And they have a routine, just like people, they come up, do the liquid salt. Take a nap or whatever and go back to the creek, go graze and come back, liquid salt, take a nap. It's just amazing. It's a cow's wife, they got a maid, to the very end.
To the very end, exactly.
Now, my neighbor put out a game camp and it had some kind of a bobcat. Like it had a longer tail, but it looked like a bobcat, it was like, they said, it looks like a mountain lion and a bobcat back there. And created something, they have no idea, just down the fishing game, they have no idea what it was. Like, great, that's hanging out in the backyard with my kids.
I think we're still alive. Yep, did you have me get the Sisgra? Well, that's right, you said it'd be a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Are you guys widening it or just fixing it? Yep. How much you doing, how much road, quarter mile?
Like, close to, about a half.
Come over and take a look at it, are you working on it now? Yeah, I drove through there one time and I scratched the paint off my truck, it was so brushy. Do you need a clutch? Oh my gosh, that's a job marrying those things back together. Couldn't, couldn't drag it in the shop. Well, usually you can release those hydrostats and tow it. Maybe not on a four tractor, I don't know. I know all the New Hollands, you can flip the deal over to the axle and it releases that hydrostat. That's how I get my swather out when I get it stuck. Hey Pat? Good.
Welcome to Life Size. Enter the extension of the person you want to call or the meeting you want to join and press the pound I have.
Jeff, your name, the meeting. Are you in town next week? I messed up and didn't get that meeting set up for this week. Wednesday maybe?
What are the two press ones? Petty cash, basically, but it's for them, it's to be able to have money in the cash register to conduct business. So they want, they're going to ask, yeah, they're going to have, it's Department of Motor Vehicles.
Oh, it's DMV, I've got to have it too. I got DMV. Why would the essential need that, I got DMV. I thought we had a policy that didn't take cash.
No. It's, well, my understanding, the commissioners also made a decision for, we've been told the building department. But I don't recall all that ever being formally decided. At some point in time, we'll put that on the agenda.
Well, that would go check our credit cards.
Well, they've been allowed to collect cash to.
I know Jeff's taking stuff to road crossings, but that's all checking credit cards, there's no bad.
We got about six more minutes.
We did?
Was there a lot for three weeks? And there was people with two.
They were both defined, didn't they?
Well, that's dope.
Really cut that budget back.
Well, we've left it the same. There was one increase for medical.
For mental health.
But I, I still think with the Medicaid expansion, we, we don't know.
Right, oh yeah.
We, we just have to be safe.
But that could end up affecting security.
No, that's a separate levy. It's a separate levy, but we have accounted for some, we needed cash for that debt fund. There were two denials and a release of suspension for last week. Well, that would be in a minute. Yeah. I thought I read it.
Ron, is that you? Who's on the line for the?
It's me.
Okay, welcome, we were waiting, well, wait for you to start. So at this time, we're going to go on to. What's that?
You're waiting for me to start, that's all scary.
No, 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 waiting for you to call in, now we're going to start. It is, you're right, it is a little scary. Our next agenda item is an opportunity for the general public to present to the commissioners and as Mr. Jay Jakes from No Business. So Jay, you want to come on up to the mic?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jay Jakes from Donnelley.
Thank you.
So I thought Larry would be here, I know Ron, I talked to you. So I thought Larry would be here. I know Ron, I talked to you yesterday. Last time I addressed the commissioners was in January and we had agreed, you know, we'll move forward with some different ideas, work with the Forest Service, working with the groomers, et cetera, et cetera. All that's happened. Commissioner Bingham was out for the Forest Service event and I think it went really well, according to the ranger. Sounded like everything was, were big shortfalls or anything that was going to stop it. Unfortunately, he did tell me that it wasn't going to be able to probably get done for this winter. So that's when, you know, Ron and I have been talking the whole time about an alternate process, I guess, of sharing the road, which is what we talked about long ago. But anyway, we've worked through some easement issues. It sounded like Ron can step in here, I guess. But Larry Laxson is going to do a survey and figure out what the easements are and then we just split the road and go from there. So for this winter and then obviously I need that to be a long-term solution, just in case something happens with the Forest Service solution. So anyway, that's where we're at. Everybody that I've talked to seems to be okay with it, but obviously I need to present it to you and then we go from there.
Ron, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think, I think Jay's son's done it up fairly well. We're not really sure where we are in the Forest Service. And there was some clarifications that we needed to get based on the survey to know what we had to work with. That has been cleared up a little bit. There's some concerns about the neighbors and what, on the edge of the right of way or the easement. Those have been cleared up since Donnel County actually owns everything. Those issues, I think, have been, a lot of those have been resolved. It does appear that there's adequate space to accommodate both our needs and Jay's.
But this is just a temporary until the new route is built, maybe what, by next year? Or is this?
This portion of, the lower portion of it, Mr. Albrecht, would be a permanent solution. Because we have to, we have to parallel each other up to that point, which is approximately a quarter mile from the trailhead, where it takes off on the Aldis route. So this would be more of a permanent solution to the lower end of that road.
Well, then let me ask you, why is the Forest Service involved?
Well, the Forest Service involved, let me, let me put it this way, we've got a Plan A and Plan B. The Plan A is to get adequate access to Mr. Jakes for this winter. The Plan B is the portion of it that's tied into the Forest Service, where we deviate from the county road onto Forest Service property and bypass about a mile of steep, narrow road going forward. And that's, that's something we're looking at, trying to get a, get a long-term solution to the upper end of that, of that road. Because that is, sharing the route up there is probably not an option.
And I, for full disclosure, I got a call from Larry this morning, who happens to be in ER right now with a lung issue. It's not, it's not serious, but he stated that right now, the thing that's holding it up is the surveyor. He's a pretty busy guy and as soon as they can mark the center of that road and get that part done, the sooner the better. He did talk to Jay, or Jake Stromeyer, and Jake felt like there's a good possibility that they might be able to do something yet this summer. So everything is in limbo right now until we can kind of see, you know, get some of this, this surveying done and see what Jake's talking about. And hopefully Larry will be back with us and we'll just kind of continue on down the road and I guess that's the only plan I can think of.
The question is, who's paying for the survey? And then what is our next steps? Do we do a road maintenance agreement? And because you have counsel, we're being advised your counsel needs to present that road maintenance agreement to our counsel first.
Yeah, so, can I comment? Sure. Okay, so, yeah, I need this, this MOU, I guess. Ron and I have talked about this, but I, I think our last road agreement, I thought was pretty clear. I thought that Jeff was responsible for the road agreement, but then it turned into something different, which is fine. Ron and I both have agreed that, you know, that the verbiage in there needs to be more detailed so that people who are responsible for what knows what is going on. So that's fine. And I, the, the survey, it's a county road, so it's, you know, initially they were talking about me doing it, but I, you know, I, I mean, I can't, you know, that's not my responsibility. It's a county road, so I, I'm not sure how that's working. But anyway, I need this MOU to be, to be permanent per se, with verbiage just simply saying that whenever the Forest Service bypasses, but like Ron says, the Plan A needs to be the long-term, this is the agreement, you know, we'll plow half the road or however that works out to be. And then the long-term, the Plan B, you know, just put this all in, and I think in MOU, I don't know what the best product is, put in MOU, we all sort through the verbiage and, you know, some things will go back and forth or whatever, that's fine. And then get it the way we're both comfortable with and then we can move forward. But I have some deadlines that I, that I have to meet for Commissioner Moplin's input there. I have some deadlines I have to meet. If we can move forward and get this all done and we're all on board, I'm good with the solution that we've all agreed upon right now.
My understanding, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to come down and find the center of the road and we're going to put in probably steel T-posts and then the upside will be unplowed and the downside, the inside would be Jay Jakes' responsibility. Is that correct?
Opposite of that?
Yeah, that, that would be correct. Now, there's a, there's a cross gen for this year. And if, depending on, it would depend on whether or not we have the Forest Service portion of this in place for this year. Which side of the road, who would operate on which side of the road? We don't want snowmobile crossing our driveway, so if we didn't get an agreement with together the Forest Service, Mr. Dukes would operate on the south side of the road this year so that he's not crossing what we're doing. If we, if we do get this put together, we would operate on the south side of the road. If we can use that bypass, that way we're not crossing driveways.
Okay.
And that's the safety side of it. But essentially, yeah, we put T-posts down the center with some extensions so that everybody knew what was where and that would be the simple way to do it.
So then are you recommending that we also sign a road agreement with Jay for one year on the part that is not going to be permanent? Or should we wait and see what the Forest Service is going to do?
I, I think we've got, maybe we put that in as an appendix or an addendum or whatever on that other hundred, it's about 150 yards that goes, there's a creek in there that we need some pipe put in. We're hoping we can avoid that. But yeah, I think we could put that in as a separate piece of that MOU and, and then withdraw it down the road once, if we get the bypass portion of this agreed to, that will no longer be needed.
My feeling right now is, is it sounds like you guys have got, this worked out pretty well. And I'm, I'm thankful all you guys got together and made this work. I think we can get this done. As far as the cost, like the surveying costs, Jay, I know when we first started this, any cost that we incurred, we felt like you should be paying those costs. We really don't have to do anything. And I under, kind of get the feeling that you're not in favor of that.
Not the survey. I mean, if, if there's, if there's some work that needed to be done, the reason I say that is, is because my opinion is, you know, I talked to different people, surveyors and stuff. Like, you know, I went to high school with Rod Skifton, for example. Rod says, hey, for a road in this situation, the center line is the center line. You know, it's not like you're, we're not moving the roads is, is kind of the example. We're not moving the road. We're simply just, and this is snow, right? So we're not, we're not having to, to build up another lane or something like that. So we're simply just using from the center and then whatever it is, depending on how the survey comes out, the easement, then it's just, you know, splitting the road. Because I think if, if we do the survey, and I have seen some dots where they did the survey for the property that just sold. We have three new property owners up there and they're all talking about building and they're all talking about doing this, that and the other. But looking at the dot, it looks to me like that dot is a little bit south. While that is, so it's like a third.
So the road's not on the line, so to speak.
Right. So if that's true, then I don't know why we would, I mean, what would the county do? Would the county come in and Jeff and his crew come in and widen the road 10 feet to get that center? There's no need for that.
Just build within our right of way.
Just build within the right of way. Yeah, exactly. And just, just keep the center of the road. Go, I think, Ron, we talked about, what, 44 or 50, whatever it works out to be. Just widen it to whatever he needs and whatever I need and then it's done. The property owners I've talked to, they're good with, they understand the easements, so there's no big heartburn. As long as we don't start cutting trees down unnecessarily, you know, whatever, then I think they're all, they're all good with it.
Jeff, do you want to add anything here or your concern or?
No. Sounds like they're figuring it out.
Is that road wide enough for two lanes?
Yeah, I'm just thinking that groomer, I think the groomer from edge to edge on the tillers, probably pushing 16 feet. So they need a minimum of 16 feet on their side of the road. And then Mr. Jakes, whatever, you know.
Whatever's left?
Eight foot, 10 foot, whatever, we need to get him in and out of there.
So Ron can't hear what you're saying right now.
Oh, sorry.
Ron, can you hear it?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear it. What, what's in, what's in, I discussed with 20 feet of operating space because he's going to have, he's going to have to push snow up or stack it up. We're going to lose part of that foot ramp and just the pile of snow that's there. And as Jeff and I and everybody that lives there knows, the road gets narrower in the winter. So we figured it would take approximately 20 feet for both of us to operate while Mike can stack up. He's going to have a place to go with his and then get narrower through the winter. So it still gives him enough room to do what he needs to do, but it's going to take about 40 feet of piece of right of way to be able to operate.
The, the good thing is, sorry.
What I'm hearing is we don't need a survey. We know that we have 44 feet on the bottom and it gets wider from there. We don't need a survey.
Well, the only reason would be if you're going, if you're going to add road, if you're going to actually build some road, you want to make sure you put it in the right spot. My concern is if the road is wide enough for 40 feet.
It's definitely wide enough for 40 feet.
Go ahead, Ron.
Well, we've got 52 feet down there according to the, according to the deeds on that end. So we have enough right of way. The question is, the main issue is, on the one side, the south side, there's some water that would undercut the trail, that would collapse it when it started running in the spring. And that's, we're going to have to make some adjustments to support that. If, and we don't, again, you better know where that center line is because you get your tail soon if we get off the side and get onto somebody else's property.
Yeah, I think we need to.
And start cutting trees or brush or whatever.
I agree 100% for liability issues. We need to find out where the center of that easement is, not the road, but the easement. And then we'll go from there.
Correct. We need to, we need a correct starting point so we don't get ourselves in trouble, whether it's me or you or Jay or whoever is doing the work. We want to make sure we're on, we're on our property doing that work.
Right, exactly. So Ron, you and Jay and Jay's attorney, I take it, are going to work on the MOU?
I think we can work on the details of it. I guess this meeting for me was just to make sure that you guys are comfortable with the concept of an MOU. I'm thinking that we need detail on signs, we need detail on two paves for what. We, we've established what the, what the right of way is. If we need to put that into it, we can. But the deep, you know, that's really where the last deal fell apart was, was the detail side of it and the expectations on both parts.
Right, right, yeah.
Ron, this is Dave talking over here. Just to be clear, can you tell us if the Forest Service alternative route does not happen this year? Will we need to do any?
Sorry. Got some background noise.
Show your truck door.
Put your seatbelt on. No, if the Forest Service alternative plan doesn't go through this year, are we going to need to do any dirt work on that road to widen it out anywhere?
Well, we'll still need to do the dirt work on the county road regardless of what happens with, with the Forest Service portion of that.
Here, Ron.
The lower, the lower end, there's, on the south side, there's about 100, 150 yards of an area that's lower. If we can widen that out a little bit, get a little bit more, and it doesn't require, wouldn't require pine grading. It would just require, you know, six inch minus stuff along the one side or fill and reposition the toe of the road so that water runs away from, into the road, but doesn't undermine the trail. So yeah, there is some work between the trailhead and where that cutoff road is.
Okay.
Hey, Ron, also, we do need to think about if the Forest Service thing doesn't go through, remember we got to add the pipe on the creek and widen that a little bit.
Correct. On the south side, direct bullet dews, it's on Jay's property, so that one is not, when we talked about, isn't near, near a problem than some of the others. If we don't have the adequate.
My understanding, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong here, but if we have to do any kind of dirt work or pipe work or fill, Jay was going to pay for it. Is that correct?
There, that, that was what was discussed. There has been some volunteer, some, there have been some volunteer work offered, you know, if somebody can help pay for the fuel. So there's, there's some other pieces in that, but that was, that was my understanding as well.
Okay, are you good with that?
For the most part, depending on what it is, obviously. I'm, I'm good with paying our fair share, let's call it that. I got to tell you, I, I'm not really in favor of paying for a survey that, that relates to the county, if you see what I mean. So the, the survey is, is, is the county road, the county road, so, you know, I don't know. I don't know how much that would be, so.
I don't, I don't think it's going to be that much.
If it's not much, I, I don't have big heartburn, but I, you know, I don't want to pay a lot of money for it, obviously.
But the issue is, is our surveyor is swamped right now doing subdivisions and doing some of this other stuff. I know from the beginning, I've always felt like you want to change the access on that road in order to get your house, and I think that's admirable. But if there's any extra expenses the county incurs to get that function done, that you're going to pay for.
Right.
I want to make that very clear upfront, including the survey.
So again, I agree with doing the extra stuff to like to build up a road or something like that. But again, my, my opinion is, is that, you know, this is a county requirement. For me, to split the road down the center and the inputs I've got, with, you know, I don't feel like we need to do a survey. Now, Ron is saying that, well, you know, it's a liability issue, but the liability issue goes out to, what is it, Ron, 55 feet or whatever it is? Anyway.
I see it's 54 feet.
It's so wide.
26 feet from center.
Right.
I think a centerline survey is all we need. We don't need the edges. We can figure that out.
Anyway.
Yeah, once you get.
Let's see what it is.
Yeah, once you get centerline, everything's easy.
It's not a deal breaker. It's just my opinion.
Okay.
Well, maybe we can split that where it's going to benefit both of us, then maybe that's something you put in the MOU.
Can you hear me, Ron, this is Jeff?
Yes.
I, I just want to get this straight in my head. So you, you keep saying the south side of the road has water in the ditch. Yes, I, I know that. I thought we were going to run the groomer up the north side of the road and let Jay have the south side of the road. So why would that water affect the groomer?
It depends on which path we do.
If we're, if we're running, if we, if we get the bypass, the groomer will run on the south side up to where that 186 F road takes off. And that way you're not crossing, we're not, we're keeping the traffic separated. If you run it up the. we're not, we're keeping the traffic separated. If you run it up, if you run, if we don't get the bypass done, if we run up the north side of the road, that way we don't have traffic crossing driveways. So it really depends on which way that, which side of that we end up on.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We may operate this one way for one year until we get that agreement in place with the Forest Service and then swap sides.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on this?
Yes, please. One more thing. So I don't know if it's, just talked with Jeff, so I don't wanna surprise him, but I thought that maybe if we do have to do the, the bypass doesn't happen and, you know, we end up plowing the lane, I didn't know if there was a possibility to have the county plow that side up to our driveway and then we could pay... I don't know if that's an option or not. It's not, it's no big deal. I mean, it's plowing snow, but anyway, it's just something that...
Well, I think there's a lot of people up here, Jay, that plow their own road, even the county.
Oh, I don't mind plowing it, just so, to be clear. But again, I don't wanna get into that, into the past, but, you know, as long as, you know, when I plow the road, you know, in the verbiage, Ron and I will make sure it's clear that whoever it is that's responsible needs to come out and communicate that it's all good or it's bad, whichever. Yeah. So I don't, I don't mind plowing it myself. You know, I bought a skid steer, I got a blower, I, so anyway.
I don't think we're planning on expanding our plowing services right now based on our funding.
I figured you looked bored, so I thought maybe, you know, it's got...
I think if the, if the thing works out the way we're looking at it working out, I think it's gonna be easy for you to do your side and it won't, shouldn't interfere with the grooming side.
Yeah, sounds good.
It's gonna be easier if we have shared use now. Groomer's gonna be on this side. Jay's gonna be on this side. He can take it right down to the ice layer every time he flops. Not having to worry about leaving six inches of snow or foot of snow, whatever. As long as he doesn't get up to the gravel, so once you get an ice layer built, that little skid steer, he's not even gonna, he's gonna be able to...
Yeah, my, my blower's got the feet on it, as you know, so I, yeah.
It's gonna make it easier this way.
Okay, we've gotta move on, so you guys get back...
We got a more question for Jeff that I just was gonna bring out real quick. Jeff, do you have any concerns about having some volunteer help on expanding or widening that road or doing some of that work if we end up doing total work?
As long as it's filmed to county standards, basically.
Well, that'll be up to you to be heavily involved in that part.
We gotta get the live water up there and require a rural port permit. Who's responsible for that?
And that would be Jay.
That's our army port permit.
Right, that's because we're doing it to help him out. He's gonna have to cover the expenses. That's what we even agreed.
I don't think they charge for it, it's just the time.
It's a time issue and they gotta come up and look, yep.
I've talked to the new property owner. It's on his property and I've told him what we're doing and he's okay with that. And I said, you know, to his benefit, sort of, manage that water because it is just a big marshy mess. So, anyway, yeah, he's willing to do his part.
We're gonna move on, so you guys get back to us with this MOU and we'll take a look at it then and hopefully we make this work.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thanks, Ron. Have a good day.
Yep, thank you, bye.
Okay, the next agenda item is an action item, a request for impressed funds increase from June.
Thank you. It's impressed. I didn't...
Impressed. EST.
I'm always impressed when I find funds too.
What this is for is I ordered two new cash registers for the DMV. This way, each clerk will have their own cash register. It's just a good idea. But I need money for the cash drawers and we always start out with 200 in each drawer. I'd never done this before, so I sent an email to both Clerk Miller and to our treasurer. And Treasurer Gabe got back to me and said, my understanding is that it would come from the treasurer's cash. We track impressed funds in their own separate accounts. So I asked Gabe to come to help answer any questions you may have because I am requesting 200 for each cash register, which would be a total of $400.
You have a cash register downstairs too?
Mm-hmm. This way, each clerk has their own. We'll have two in the Cascade DMV and two in the McCall. It'll just be better for balance.
And then they have to balance every night and all that kinda stuff?
Yes.
Gabe, are you good with this? Everything's all right?
Yes, I am.
Any more questions, comments? This is an action item, so I'd entertain a motion to authorize the request for impressed funds.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the request for the impressed funds.
Second.
Before we vote, June, what have you guys been doing now? Do they have cash registers?
They, they share.
They share one?
Yeah.
So you have to buy one more machine?
No, I've got, I have one in McCall and one in Cascade.
Oh, you're gonna buy two, oh, for which one?
I purchased two.
Okay.
So this way, each clerk will have their own.
Is this something we have to run through IT? Does anybody know?
No.
No?
No. Kathy programmed the cash registers.
Okay. It's been moved a second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries.
Thank you.
The caveat, are we trying to move away from cash as much as possible? I mean, this is a need that you have, that you use cash?
A lot of people still use cash. We do take credit cards, but a lot of people do use cash, so we need it. And I just, this morning, I was given notice by one of my staff up in McCall. Her last day will be next Tuesday. Debbie. So I am going to be down, one employee, Kathy and I discussed it. I'll probably have to send Meg up to McCall to help Angela out, so we're gonna be down one DMV person, but with our guard at the door, our sheriff's deputy, Kathy will not get overwhelmed because he can, he can monitor the flow. So I'm just letting you know that there may be some unhappy folks who have to wait.
Have you gotten with HR to go out for this?
Oh, absolutely. That was the first thing I did.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We've got two more minutes before our next agenda item.
You can go now, Mr. Chairman, because it's an executive session.
So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for code 742061A.
Is that a motion?
No, I can't make a motion.
Oh, so moved?
Your second? Second on that. Moved the second to go into executive session, right, code 742061A. By roll call, please.
Moplin.
Esper Guy and Doug were in at 11 o'clock.